I will call the May 15th, 2023 meeting of the zoning commission to the Bisbee. To the little hall, Mike Abelin.
Present.
David Brown.
Present.
Welcome. David Dogg.
Present.
Douglas Dunn. Here. Alicia. Spirit King. Sandra Huesman.
Here.
Doug Taylor.
Present.
And Mel.
Here.
He's here in terms of the council liaison and his staff. Call to the public, of which there is none out here. Agenda item number one, discussion of possible direction of staff regarding potential code enforcement to the property located at 39 Old Douglas Road. Mr. Ward.
We were talking about code enforcement last time. I thought I'd deal myself with you guys and get some input from you on what, on this property. The guy that uses the property, he, when he did, way back when, he turned that from a Baptist church, I think it was, or Pentecostal, whatever it was, it's important. But he had turned it into a metal shop for himself, just for doing his projects. So I think it's kind of grown out of that. I don't think he looks at that. I think it's just personal. But anyway, that's not what we're here for. The point is that it is, it's an unsightly, and it doesn't really meet the qualification that are the uses for Division One of commercial property, the C1 zone. And I just wanted some direction from you guys. Or some direction to you guys.
So I, when you gave us the code on fences, I thought this would be a fencing item, but it's really an unsightly mess item?
I think, I think that the best, the best way to handle it, from what my experience is, is that I think he needs a special use permit because he exceeds the C1. And the special use permit would enable him to do something beyond that, but it would, it doesn't give it as a right. It's a privilege. And then, one of the things that he would need to do is to fence the property because right now, it looks like a junkyard, for lack of a better, a nicer way to say it. And there's also, we also have in our city code, and of course I didn't bring that because it's not about city code today, but city code requires fences around junkyards, if I remember correctly.
And that's what you consider it a junkyard?
I think it looks like a scrapyard.
Yeah, well, and that, then, you know, and enforcement's my big issue lately. I don't know why, but I feel like there's so many that we have. Jeffrey Harris and, I don't know, Mark on the corner of Black Knob. You know, even Center, you know, 7th Center Street, you know, there's a, there are some air quote fences on some of those. There's one on 121 Bisbee that looks kind of junky, but, so where do we start and where do we end on that? And what does that put, you know, we've talked about the burden that puts on.
I've been getting some, I've been getting some really good help on that. And you, you know the difference. But Amanda and Nina, especially Nina, has been jumping in and taking care of all the paperwork on this. And then they give me that, or it winds up on my calendar, pops up today. There was one regarding a fence in Old Bisbee I just was looking at before I got here. And it pops up and give me a reminder, the time's up, I need to go look at it, and so on, that it's been very helpful.
So you feel you have enough enforcement to take care of all of these that'll come up? And then that then ripples into residential, like, you know, Youngblood Hill?
How about we stick with just the item first and then we'll go into the enforcement part? Sorry.
Yeah, I'm sorry. No, you're right. I get casual here. It's like sitting around the fire.
But I wanted you guys, you know, to understand that this is the kind of stuff that we're dealing with. I think this is a good place to start. And maybe next month I'll bring you guys another one, if this, if this works for you. If you don't, if you don't care about this, it's not really something that you have to do.
I did, I did notice on the building, he has a business name, Night.
Workshop, I think.
Night Workshop, yeah. So he, he actually is running a business out of there? Or is that just for show?
I don't want to step in that, in that trap, but, you know, city employees, the most, the most money that comes into the city that pays our wages and everything comes from sales tax. And we really like to encourage people to have legitimate businesses and collect sales tax and keep everything up and up. And it's everybody's benefit, especially ours.
So I just want to add to you, number one, I would encourage you to continue to bring this, these types of things to our attention. It's important that the zoning plan, the zoning commission is made abreast of what's going on in the community. We don't know everything, but anything that you think is pertinent, I would encourage you to continue to bring this to our attention. The second thing is to piggyback on Doug, and I don't know, do we comment now or not comment?
On. On enforcement?
Yes.
No, it's not time. Item two is enforcement.
Oh, okay. So I just thank you for bringing this to your attention. And I would appreciate if you would continue to do so for our benefit, so we know what's going on.
So question, if, if maybe he is operating a business out of there, but he doesn't have a license and a sales tax number, is there another approach we could use other than a special use permit?
Regarding those other, those other items, they're running a business and that, that gets into finance directors, authority, and the police and such. And I do, I do help with that some too, because I've been authorized by Kerry to help with that. But the, the special use permit would cover the items that are really relevant to you guys. And if there's other ways to do it too, it could be rezoned. But I don't know that rezoning is appropriate since it'd be spot rezoning. And we've already got, it's already a C1 with the spot zoning. But that would be, that would be your calls to give me some advice on it.
If I may, I think the solution to this is to have the person come in and apply, either apply for a special permit or explain why they don't need it. Or I don't think a zone change is appropriate, but maybe a special permit. If they, you know, have proof that they're a hobbyist, you know, I see cars there and old trucks and things, but, you know, you never know. But I think that would be the first step, is just have them come in and apply for a special permit.
There are rules and regulations. Whether or not those rules and regulations are followed, that's a whole nother conversation. Whether or not they're enforced is another conversation. I think the core issue is, do we have zoning regulations in place that this individual needs to follow? If the answer is yes, which I'm assuming we do, then the next question is, is he in violation of those rules that are in place? It's either yes or no. If he is in violation, then it is our obligation or the city's obligation to enforce those. Here we go, the next topic of conversation is, what do we do next? So he's in violation. It's just plain and simple.
All right. I appreciate the help.
This is interesting. I drove around and around here. It has the old Douglas Road address, but it's on 80, right?
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, that, that address, that, he had come in and was, dealt with me, and then he dealt with, and then he had kind of appealed to Jesus Haro. And he wanted, he had picked out an address that he wanted. Kind of, and I wouldn't give it to him because the address that he had is sequential. The road, using an old Douglas Road address is not good. And it's not logical, and it needs to be changed to a Highway 80 address.
Well, had me confused. I assume that was where the property was, right? Go over it several times, trying to figure out how they got that address.
Addresses are huge. You know, I used to tell Doug when he was with us over there, you know, that we could, we could get somebody, you know, probably get a grant to have somebody for six months, do nothing but work on addresses in Bisbee. And I think it would be appropriate to do that because, because that saves people's lives because those first responders are able to find them. But maybe something for the, in the future for Bisbee to do. It's my job to do it, but it doesn't have the priority that other things do. So it's, you know, now and then, at least if their addresses forced on them.
Any further comments?
Just a question, how did he manage to designate that address themselves? He just decided? I mean, how? What?
We want them to be sequential and it makes sense, but he had a number that was not sequential.
And he?
And he was very adamant that he wanted that number.
And he did it? And he acquired that address and?
Oh, no, no, the current address, he didn't, we didn't let it change.
Oh, okay.
But the, the number on the building, that shouldn't change. It really works well, but it should not be.
Okay, yeah, that's okay.
That's nonsense.
So I guess as consensus move forward, I mean, this is not an item for a vote.
Did you want him to move forward with a special, getting him to apply for a special use permit? Or giving the gentleman a notice of violation or, or what?
Can I make a comment on this, which Nina just asked? I think the first step would be, give him a notice of violation and have him come and repose that through either license or what, who would agree or disagree. But I think for the process to proceed, give him a notice of violation. I think that would be, what, what do you guys think so? So that's what get the wheel, the engine out moving. And then go from there, what do we go to give them a license? We decide, and that decision we can't stay. But I think the first step would be, just to prevent this, to send a note, to make, to make our point, is give him a notice of violation.
I think, I think before the notice of violation, what, you know, both you ducks know about our friendly letters.
Yeah, letter, whatever you want to call it, yeah.
Well, that's, that's, they're even on my computer, friendly letter, you know, with an address and a whole subcategory. But the friendly letters, you see what I said?
Yeah, yeah, you go through the process of something, you know.
So no, if you want to, if you want to give the guy an olive branch, you send a friendly letter.
Yeah.
It's documented, it's memorialized.
And then you go from there.
It shows good faith on Bisbee, that we're here to work with you, we're not trying to quash you. But you have to understand.
But you can have to do something every day.
Yes.
Or you get that NOB.
So, you know, it's a normal procedure.
It's a small community, so. But the desire to get some fencing, is that to fence the property?
I think that should be part of the NOB, part of the special use permit.
Well, there's more to it than just a fencing. He's, he's in violation of the code. Fencing is nothing more than a Band-Aid or a mask. That still doesn't constitute or give him the right, because we're dependent on sales tax dollars. We're dependent on a lot of things, so, I mean, I don't want to digress, but we can give people some latitude, and we're willing to give some people latitude. But at the same time, you've got to play by the rules. And we give to one, then we're going to end up giving to others. And we're going to get into a real pickle here because we don't have enforcement. And I'm looking forward to commenting on the next topic, which is the enforcement, because we're in a very precarious situation, folks.
Hopefully, hopefully, in another, another month or two months, probably, then the owner of the property can make it for you guys, ask him for his special use permit.
Also, I think it's good to refer to the adjoining property, which was similar, but has been cleaned up significantly and fenced. So, I mean, that's the desired, desired outcome.
And that's that residential property on the other side?
Well, it's just, it's on 80, it's just, you know, I'm sure I give directions, but anyway, that, the street behind that property, the adjoining property, that is very similar. I think it was an old, state of Arizona motor vehicle or something like that was there. Anyway, it was a huge bunch of junk, a huge bunch of junk, which I bought a lot of it.
Full disclosure.
But anyways, it's significantly cleaned up, that's why I know that property, and it is fenced. So, I mean, it is, and.
I think the key is there's no one doing any business there, you know, it's not.
It's not open to the public, that's the second one, it's completely fenced. What Mike was saying, if he's going to do business, then he needs to, whatever, we go through the process and eventually, hopefully, if he sell it and he has customers, he needs to get a license to do business.
My point is that we're asking him to kind of follow his neighbor's example.
Oh, okay.
May I just ask Mr. Ward a question? In under Division One, you have automobile, is that sort of what he's doing? Is that, is he falling within the Division One? And just not paying the sales tax, is that, that's a whole different item than coming before us?
But a service station is a whole different use. This is more like a shop.
Also, the service station would be where you're working on engines and pumping gas and that sort of thing?
Service station generally is a gas, is a gas station.
Okay, so this isn't like an automotive shop?
Yeah, I think, I think this is more like a machine shop or a.
Machine shop.
Yeah, so that's probably.
So Doug, Doug, the machine shop typically is classified under a, classified under a CI zone, which is commercial industrial. Commercial allows certain parameters for you to operate. Industrial is another higher, more restrictive classification. So I can tell you that this guy's property is an EPA disaster, okay? And it's going to be problematic. So you have commercial rules and regulations that allow you to operate under a certain umbrella. And then within that, there's other fine tuning that requires industrial. Typically, a service station is classified under commercial use for an industrial purpose, okay? And this is where it just, that's why industrial property in certain areas is at a premium, because it has limited uses. And, you know, it's just, it's the code. So fence, great, you're required to have a fence around a commercial property. You can even have razor wire on a commercial property, if it's a commercial property. Commercial property does not justify the right to then use it as industrial, it has to have a specific zone. And we're, we're crossing over into commercial use, great. Now it's also an industrial use, and that's not part of the zone. Want to rezone it, we'll pay your application fee, go do your survey, do all the prerequisites that are required. Again, it's not to restrict anyone, but these are things that, you know, we've got to have these hard discussions about. Right? We'll expect this on a future agenda. Move on to agenda item number two, discussion regarding expansion of enforcement. Mr. Taylor?
Well, it was, it was something I brought up at the last meeting. I'm going to direct this question to the council member. Is, do they have any saying about getting more support for Mr. Ward?
Well, I cannot, you know, tell you if there is, if the specific budget was done. And I think, I don't know if they had additional personnel for this, to be honest with you. And it's something that we'll have to get back with. So I mean, I couldn't give you an answer right now.
That's fine. I just, I think.
He may know, I don't know.
Okay, well, that'd be good.
Yeah, we're going to have five days a week, instead of five, 10 hour days a week. Three by me and two by Javier, in the new fiscal year, which begins July 1st.
And I guess that goes back to the question where I was out of line, was that, do you feel that that will cover the workload that you have?
I think it would help a lot.
Yeah, I.
I don't know that it will.
Okay, that's what I'm concerned about. I just feel like.
Because Javier has gone now to almost full time, huh? Javier is.
Javier will be, will be two days a week. He'll be 20 hours a week.
20 hours, so he's going to stay part time, am I right?
Yeah, as a building inspector.
Yeah.
Until February, and whichever point he will be, I'll be gone.
Okay. Oh, you're gone?
This is my building, man.
Just off the record, I don't believe until I see it.
Yeah, I like my job.
Yeah, he's, you know, I've seen people like you. I've seen people like you.
He's not going. Anyway, God. Well, I guess I still would like to, and I have nothing for it here because I have no power with, with the budget or anything, but I would still like to look into, and now I'm concerned, come February, that there's going to be one person again, which is basically what you were when I first met you. And I don't think that's enough for this town, has got, you know, the real estate market is staying pretty strong, even where it's dropping in other places. I don't see us putting enough resources into the enforcement of various zoning historic, because that's in zoning, building. You know, there's a lot of things that, you know, that you, that fall under you, including probably parking. I would like to see, and I'll do some research on this in the interim. I didn't this time, I had other things. But I'd like to look at the examples of where fines have, because I think fines for, well, I mentioned some of the residential, you know, I don't know, Tenard Avenue came up in my mind when I was talking before. It's a, looks like it's going to fall down off that hill behind the Jockwell, you know, at the very top. And, or at least the top of the residential. And I worry about things like that. You and I have looked at Youngblood Hill. And, you know, some of those are dilapidated, they're just either full, you know, people using drugs or a fire hazard.
I'm glad you mentioned Youngblood Hill. Have you seen it lately?
No.
Oh, you need to go up there. I'll go up with you when you go.
Okay, that'd be great, yeah.
You would not believe how much, you got that one, that one place that, that, and I talked to the owners just yesterday. Just coincidence, but, and they're, and they're going to be forced to tear it down, that one, that's horrible. The rest of them, like, all of them being fixed up.
Oh, that's fantastic.
And that was the worst, nastiest, meanest neighborhood that we had. And I am so happy about the progress that's been made at Youngblood Hill. And that's not due to anything except for the property value has gone up and it's worth it to people to fix those up.
And, and maybe that starts a, you know, a fever where people think they can fix some of the really, you know, if you get it for a cheap enough price, you know, there's, what is it? The city owns that one on OK Street, I can't remember the number of it, but, and then there's the, the, what is it? Tucson, Tombstone, 805 Tombstone. You know, there's a bunch of them that still need, hopefully, this will set an example. You know, even there's some over in, in Tintown that could, could use.
We've got some really nice stuff done in Tintown, too.
Yeah.
That place over there on Terran.
Yeah, I talked to them earlier on this year, yeah.
Let me make a comment, just so before it goes, if you don't want to. Regarding enforcement, you're saying what, if the city will have more personnel, my recommendation to you as a committee here, maybe come up with a recommendation. That's, you know, we will not come to you and say, we're going to do this, we're going to, because we have a certain income and we go, you know, if we copy and paste. So your group may come up with the justification and raise it in front of council. We believe based on that, and like the things you said, it has to be justified. You have to say the growth, the number of real estate. And then you can come up with a recommendation, and then hopefully go through the process. But for them, for the city, we just tell you in general, you're not going to say, oh, we're going to add more personnel. Nobody will approve this based on just because we feel we have to add. So if it comes to you with a recommendation and you can show them the potential, what you can do, well, we have more real estate, more investment, more fee, more enforcement, which will generate enough to offset an additional expense, I think there'll be right things. So maybe something on the future agenda you can come up, you have to work on it first and then raise it up to council.
I agree. That's what would be my recommendation.
Well, I'd like to piggyback on that now with Doug. I made a comment earlier about that's why I want to be made aware of all these different things. You know, it's not necessary to change, but also remember survival's not mandatory. And it's not to be sarcastic, that's reality. Bisbee's changing. We're an artist community, we're a very liberal community, and there's no harm in that. But we are growing, and we're growing in a different path than we did in the past. And if we're not careful, incidences like what you are presenting right now with this type of debris and other things that you're mentioning are not going to go away. They're actually going to increase, okay? And big cities are now faced with huge problems. And I echoed this at the meeting before and the meeting before that. It's not mean to come into Bisbee and all of a sudden turn us into some type of, you know, very strict, Gestapo-like environment. But we have to be conscientious of this, and we have to be able to give back to the community and support the community. And again, we encourage artists, we encourage other businesses, but those come with conditions. And I'm very, very concerned as a business owner, and I'm seeing the changes going around, that if we do not do something about enforcement and give those that have the power to enforce the support that they need, it's an exercise in futility. And Bisbee will go downhill very, very fast. It will be labeled as a landing pad where nobody gives a shit and just come on down and hang out. And I don't think any of us want to give up the sleazy elegance, for lack of a better word, that Bisbee has, because it's very unique. But at the same time, we must support Joe and other enforcement agencies. So Mel, is there a guideline or do you have a format that we can present collectively to get this on the table?
You can do, make a recommendation as a group. The only thing you can do is like, Doug, you know, started it well, and I did my recommendation what I heard you. You have to come up with this and justify, you know, in any city who's spending, like he said, it's taxpayer money, we are custodian of this, we're not going to just add more people.
Well, we need to be able to show the fact that support, that's not going to cost us any more money.
With enforcement, with fees, with whatever, we may be able to. And what comes in front of council, I'll be, I'm, you know, I'm considered very conservative on spending and stuff. I'll support something like this, it would make sense.
So Doug, do we need to, or do we need to form a?
I was going to say, Doug, would you like to?
David?
Would you like to bring something to us at our next meeting?
Yeah.
I'll do some research on that in terms of.
Just justification for, I mean, I stated it very well in terms of, you know, it's not just enforcement, this is about economic development of the community and our future.
And it brings us up to tourism and all kinds of things. I will put something together and we can go from there.
And that will leave a next meeting for discussion. And it may take a couple meetings to eventually get it there, but we'll start the process.
Yeah, justifying the need for more enforcement. There's plenty of data from the Board of Tourism that shows you Airbnb, or the bet tax, the sales tax, the real estate, I mean, there's a preponderance of some very quick four or five bullet points that show that Bisbee is not on the decline, Bisbee is actually on the map, okay? And in a good way.
Yeah, it's unique.
You know, my experience is that the city council has a lot of respect for the opinions of the P and D commission. You guys, you guys, your voice really resonates with them, so don't underestimate that.
You're very, you're hard, really. As a constant person, I can say that.
Good, thank you. That would be for our next meeting.
Yeah.
Now we're ready. Further staff comments? Other items?
Nothing.
Mr. Comments, Alicia, would you like, we've got a memo from you, would you like to speak on that? As a future agenda item?
Um, yeah, so I sent Nina over some information she forwarded on to the committee. You know, reiterating, you know, the grant. So there's a bunch of grants coming down from the USDA. I just saw the article on the news the other day, you know, there's some clean energy initiatives. And Bisbee is, you know, meets all of their criteria. So I brought some information, global burning that. And it's an example of a town in Colorado, Eagle, Colorado, on their general plan. From, from a, you know, standpoint of knowing, you know, if we want to introduce these economic opportunities into our community, I think the first place to advertise that or let it be known to the developers of the world, so to speak, is through our general plan. Not only just on the clean energy side, but also on the affordable housing side. I know a big challenge there as well. And there's also grants coming down through the Inflation Reduction Act and the Infrastructure Act. And then some resources on, you know, grant writers. And then some resources on, you know, grant writers. I constantly peruse these websites and keep up to date as to what's coming down. It's just, like I said, an opportunity for Bisbee to get some funding and implement some programs.
Okay. Could we include that as a future agenda item?
What are we, can we specify that agenda item? What are we, what are you trying to, I'm not sure what?
The agenda item is to update the general plan.
So you wanted just a discussion regarding updating the general plan?
Yeah. And addition of clean energy and affordable housing in that plan.
All right, so the clean energy, affordable housing?
Yeah. Maybe just, you know, maybe adding a section within our plan.
Alicia, is it fair to say that enforcement can be brought in as a contributing factor to some of these grants? It would stand to reason if you're going to increase population...
We can't discuss her future item, sorry. She can mention it, but we can't discuss it because it's not on the agenda.
Yeah, we'll be up.
Okay. Would the pursuit of grants, the grant writing itself be part of the agenda item?
If that's what she wants to include.
Well, I think we'll be able to figure out the what, which is the general plan, and then we get to the how.
Okay, so you want to do the what first and then it'll be the how?
Yeah.
Okay.
And then we need the why. And then who?
Fine.
Well, thank you, Alicia.
Thank you, Alicia.
You brought this to us up before and I appreciate your memo here, so we'll include that on the next agenda, okay? Other future agenda items from council or commissioners?
I have, I'm wondering about ADA Main Street, which is the building downhill from the Royale that David Cook owns that's been boarded up and is basically a bulletin board. And no one seems to mind, maybe this is part of our sleazy elegance, is that what you call this?
Yeah. But if we're going to, you know, working on residential areas and we've got to build one of, what, maybe, how many dozen buildings are there on Main Street? Not many. And that one has been allowed to be an eyesore. I heard that David Cook said that, "I'll sell this building over my, over my dead body." And, well, he's getting pretty old now. But if we gave him a kick, if we're able to do that, you know, to say, hey, you've got to make your building presentable, you can't have, you know, Gretchen or someone at Cornucopia actually put a permanent sign up there, which I thought was pretty ingenious, but also totally shady, right? It's a bad sign, so you don't even see it, but you should just put it up there.
I'm sorry, what was that address again?
Eighty-eight Main.
Oh, eighty-eight, okay.
It's been boarded forever.
So I'm suggesting a discussion if there's anything, planning and zoning can suggest to the city commission or to staff as to...
So basically, like item, item number one, a direction to staff regarding eighty-eight Main? Okay.
I mean, they have, even though they're vacant buildings, that doesn't give you the right to have a fire hazard or a public health and safety issue. So I'm in support of what you're saying because...
That's what's going on inside, you're totally right about that.
No discussion can be had, I'm sorry.
Oh, I'd like to have an item that expands on the former item, but isn't addressing it. I think there are many buildings in the town that are dilapidated, abandoned, they may still be paying the taxes, but at a hundred and fifty dollars a year...
So do you want to discuss the bad list?
The bad list, essentially. And in that, I think we'd include, there's that old convenience store on Bisbee Road that, you know, it's fenced, the fence is just lying down. It is, you know, I think...
I can't wait to talk to you guys next month about this.
Okay, great, great. Okay, so it's going to be a banner month, June is going to be, it'll be hot and sticky and a banner month.
You know that company, FYI, is still paying rent on that store because it's owned by individuals and the company, the express staff, still paying rent. So the guy has nothing to lose, he's collecting his five thousand dollars a month or whatever.
So Chuck, can I add to the list?
You can add, well, there is a very long list. So how about this? I will send you the current bad list that we have. If the property you want to discuss is not on there, email me the address. How about that? Will that work?
You've just opened yourself.
Well, you know what? We could go on and on, all night listing properties.
I just hope my address isn't on there.
Well, you know what? If you keep on, it might be.
Wow, somebody tore my house down.
Wait, who signed that number?
I think this is a very good start. It's not, it's not the intention of restricting these people, it's the intent of you've got some genuine health and safety concerns. And when you pose it as health and safety...
Again, we can't discuss it, I'm sorry.
I'm just going to turn this off.
Well, you know...
Yeah, I welcome, just got to look at bad list again, that's what I...
Yes, on the agenda.
I've been around a while and discussed a number of times, I'd like to do it again, so.
Oh, right.
Any further suggestions?
Yeah, I'm wondering if there might be a time or place to kind of visit the past on this a bit. I recall when I was a part-timer, that the city made a big effort to, I think that maybe there was some amnesty involved to get people's taxes.
Are you, no, with the amnesty?
Six years ago, maybe now.
I don't think we had, I think that was for sewer, wasn't it?
It was the sewer, remember?
Yeah.
But I think the main objective was to motivate people to fix up their abandoned properties.
Okay, I'll look into that and bring that back at the next one.
Or to turn them over. And I would think that maybe you were somewhere involved in that, Doug, and that maybe you, Doug Taylor, had heard about it.
Well, I think that was during Teresa's...
That was, from what I know, was the sewer, but taxes, I don't know.
Yeah, let me look into that and I'll bring it back at the next agenda because there could have been something like that.
I think it was all the liquid bills, you know, to break what people...
Yeah, so let me, let me see what we did back then when we had a different city manager to see what we did and then I'll bring it back so that we can discuss all of it.
Okay. Other future agenda items?
It's a good idea.
Are we ready to adjourn? I make a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned. This is the big...